Since the last meeting, there was some email communication I think we all received from a prospective candidate for the Erie One Vote Board, so I think you all got that. Yeah. Do we have any special committee meetings? No? All right, then we'll turn it right over to the superintendent.
Thank you. We have three items in the superintendent's report. First one, I'm pleased to welcome Mr. Pigeon, Mr. Wilds, and Mrs. Abels, as well as several of our teaching staff from the high school for our high school strategic planning update. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Pleasure to be here. Always relish the opportunity to shine a spotlight on the wonderful things going on at Amherst High School and the hard work of our faculty and the achievements of our students. You may recall from our fall presentation, although a high-tech device here that goes, that you can control Google Slides presentation from your phone. And we can share a little bit more of those details. So you may recall from our fall presentation that we really had a robust and meaningful plan put together. It was really culminating from a lot of great work that happened in the district committee and really the wonderful work of our team at the high school, many of which are here tonight. Mary Ellen Gergen and Carrie Mulvaney joined us from our strategic planning team, and we did a lot of work to put a wonderful plan together. We know that it's already delivering great results for our students. One of the things that we really wanted to focus on, Priority One, Two, and Three, but starting with Priority One, in learning achievement, was really taking a look at technology this year, focusing on technology. Specifically, having a lot of robust opportunities and meaningful opportunities for our faculty to gain knowledge and professional development. A lot of the emerging software that's available and apps that are available online to teachers that are really powerful to use in the classroom and enhance instruction. We're not necessarily just looking for gizmos like this, although this helps productivity in the classroom, but things that really enhance learning, like Quizlet, Screencastify, Castle Learning. One of the things that we really focused on this year heavily was the Google Classroom. We found our teachers are really finding tremendous benefit in Google Classroom. We've introduced it with the guidance and leadership of Dr. Schoenfeld helping us out. We were able to give a couple opportunities to really focus in on Google Classroom. Both in the fall, we did a taste of tech where we introduced a number of different technology applications in one of our faculty meetings. Google Classroom was one of those. But then we followed up with Google Classroom training in January, which was a half-day opportunity where teachers again got another opportunity to take a look and really work hands-on with Google Classroom. We were able to divide it into 100 and 300 level classes because we have teachers that are quite advanced with this at this level, as well as those that want to begin to dabble with it. So we were able to differentiate that type of learning for teachers, and that was one of our goals, that we're not presenting this evening, but I thought I would mention. One of our goals was to have professional development led by teachers, and many of these sessions have been led by teachers, very differentiated in terms of what their needs and their interests are. So that was one of our goals, teacher-led presentations and differentiated professional development for our teachers. Nann is on next, and she'll share a little bit about some of the things that we're doing, not only with Google Classroom as a productivity environment for our teachers, but as well as the work of our committee, technology committee.
All right, so first I'll start out with the video that you're watching is actually an instructional video that we have developed in conjunction to send out to our teachers in conjunction with written step-by-steps to differentiate our instruction, to help the teachers with any of the needs that they have in Aspen, turning over their gradebook from year after year, grade posting. And so that's just what that is. So I'd also like to focus on the high school tech committee, and we've had a few projects this year. The tech committee is made up from a teacher from every department, and we meet quarterly, and we've had some really nice discussions about how best to support teachers in the classroom, to help them give quality instruction. And we've worked on a few projects, one of the projects being Google Classroom. And I'll just give you a brief introduction. Google Classroom is a site used to efficiently pass out papers, hand out assignments, grade, and organize everything. So all the years I've been in the classroom, I would see students put things in their backpack never to be found again. So this is a nice way to help those students. Yeah, some of you are laughing from experience, I can tell. So this is a great way to not only help organize the students, but also we thought if we're asking the teachers to use it, we, the administrators, should be using it too. We hand out special schedules, seating assignments, due dates, and it's tough. You have to go through and search your emails, search the drive, and so one of the things that we're working on, the tech committee, is organizing a place so that teachers can go and find the instructional videos, find the written step-by-step instructions, and find all of those special due dates. Was that the academic calendar? Was that the grade posting? What was that called? So just to make their lives a little easier, so they can concentrate on the important stuff of instruction. Another of the projects that we did was is we developed a survey that was given to all of the freshmen. And in order for us to advance our instruction into the technological advancements, we need to see what's available for the students at home. And we are very pleased to see that 93% of our freshmen have internet access at home and that they are in favor of possibly going one-to-one, so we can start having those conversations, which is a lead-in to introducing the teachers they're going to be talking to about the flipped classroom. And the flipped classroom is an innovative way to deliver instruction. Instead of having the direct lecture being done during class time, they are making videos that are presented to the students at night. They watch the videos at night, and then they have more guided practice during the day, and all of them have a unique approach. But before they get up and speak and I introduce Kathy Smith, she's going to be our first one, I would like to recognize the extraordinary number of hours that they have put in to develop this program. So we're so proud of them that we wanted to share that with you. And so we're going to, all three of them, we have Kathy Smith, Earth Science Jenny Keppel, Algebra, and Stephanie Radine, and we're going to start with Kathy Smith.
Hi, Kathy Smith, Earth Science at the high school. So if we could flip Nann, please, the next slide. One of the things that I'd like to talk to you about is the practice that we are demonstrating in the classroom versus the benefits that the three of us have witnessed over the past year and change that we've been using this. So one of the interesting things about the three of us is that we actually chose to flip our classrooms for different reasons, and we actually approach it very differently as well. But yet we do have a lot of similarities that we do see, so we chose to list some of them here that you can see. So one of them is that the students are able to watch the lectures at their own pace. Instead of crammed into 42 minutes or less, they are able to stop, pause, rewind, re-watch if they so choose. They can even stop and chunk and come back later and do a different section. It allows them to have more time for hands-on concept practice in the classroom. Also, it allows us to feel more comfortable having the student absent, whether it's due to illness or music lessons, or they have to leave for a sporting event, or they're in ISS or any reason. Home instruction has been super helpful here as well. The student actually is not truly falling behind. They're able to watch us teach them the material, and then hopefully they're able to pick up from that and come up with some questions that they can come and see us with later on. We keep the videos posted for the entire year, so whether it's quizzes or tests in the immediate unit or later on for the final exam, students can go back and pick and choose what units were important to them, what they need more help on versus it being demonstrated and regulated by me, this is what we're doing today. They're able to say, I was not good with this. I need to go back and take a look at it, and they can go ahead and review. If for some reason one of us was absent for any reason, there is some congruity with what's going on in the classroom. We can use that as assistance for a substitute. Now whatever worksheets the students are doing, they can either use a Chromebook or have this substitute show it to the entire class, and they can actually watch us actually teach a lesson. And then, of course, I personally, and I know that you guys have been approached by external assistants, I've had parents that just want to help their son or daughter, I've had special ed, and I've had also tutors that work with students, ask if they could sign on to my Google Classroom so that they can have access to my videos. And then lastly, it makes it more diverse. There's so many learning styles out there, and the videos at home are great for the solitary learner and the visual and audio learner. And then when they come back to class the next day, and we're doing hands-on activities that really hits the social learner and the mechanical, physical learner, and all of those different types of learning styles that we know exist, but yet we can't really hit up each day in class. So this really allows us to open the doors to have more of a diverse classroom, and we really have seen a positive feedback from the kids because of that. So the next slide is actually, some examples you'll see here are videos that I've created, being science. We already do a lot of hands-on, but we have a separate lab class for that. And I don't always get my own kids in love. So what you'll see here in the first video is an actual mineral and rock identification and using data tables and charts, and I'm able to show them something, and this is so important for the lab practical exam, and I can zoom in. This was done on my iPhone. I can zoom in and show them some of the rock and mineral samples and explain what's going on and what the physical properties are. This is a review activity where we have some notes and facts that we've learned already, and then we're adding our own review notes to it, so they have some side-by-side comparisons to things that we've gone over. And that again was done on my iPhone, and then this really mimics what I do in class because if I were in-class teaching, I would have a PowerPoint or a Google Slide presentation. I would annotate talk, draw on the board, and so not only do they get that, they get my lovely face and voice in the corner, but also it gives me an opportunity to show them things. The other day, I took the camera and I flashed it outside to show them the weather, and we were talking about weather stuff, and I was able to compare what we were learning versus what was actually happening outside. So this really mimics what I do in the classroom, especially for those kids that are out. They're getting the same type of thing going on, so I'm able to really do a lot there. So as you can see from that, I don't choose to flip all of my classes. I don't think any of us do. I like more tangible things being flipped. However, I do make videos for everything, for kids that are out, so that they can watch them, but they're optional. But I really make it more mandatory for tangible topics so that the next day in class we can do hands-on. I can check for understanding by looking at any of the annotations in their notes, as well as I am able on EdPuzzle to insert questions that they're forced to answer, and EdPuzzle also will determine how far they watched the video, how many times they watched the video, if they rewound a certain segment. And lastly, with EdPuzzle, I can also give them feedback on any answers to the questions that they gave me. And honestly, I think the best thing for me is the feedback during the next day when we're doing hands-on activities, even if I'm just observing, I am learning so much by the comments that they're making to each other and how they interpreted what they watched, that I am able to learn from that and maybe reword something or readdress something in a different way. But it's also very interesting how students will hear something and then take it in a direction. So it's really allowed me to expand my horizons as a veteran teacher, been here quite a while, to hear and learn from the kids themselves. It's exciting for me, so.
I'll pass it on. Scooch to the end of the line.
All right, so Kathy and I are very similar with our science and our math, with the flipped classroom, where we do have the videos at nights, and then they come back and we have interactive, engaging activities in class. And one of the reasons for that is because students right now are extremely social. They like to talk. They like to be interactive. They like to move around. So the flipped classroom allows them to do that in a way that's appropriate for learning. So I have three examples real quickly. So the first one is students working around the room through different activities, and actually they have to finish one to be able to connect to the next one. So it really engages them by working together, talking together, plus they have to put the whole piece together, the whole activity together. The second one is a partner activity, which is a lot of just practice, but the students have different questions, but they have the same solutions at the end. So at the end of class, towards the end of class, they have to compare their answers. If they don't have the same answer, they have to check each other's work to try to see who was right, who was wrong. They have to problem-solve together to try to be able to fix the mistake before they can turn it in. And the last one is just more of a puzzle, partner puzzle that they work together on. So these interactive activities, these are just three examples. I have many different types of interactive activities in class, but they all have the same common themes, that they involve students talking together, they involve students helping each other when they need assistance, the students are asking questions, and that's what's really unique about it, is the first time students are really, and they're in charge of their learning. So they're in charge of asking those questions, working together, and I'm just that facilitator that's walking around. So I'm making being social part of their learning, and it's helping them understand in a way that they actually, they like so a lot. To me, that's what it's really about, is that those engaging activities, they can make those connections because they truly are understanding at their own level.
Hi there, I'm Stephanie Radine. I am with the math teachers at the high school as well. One of the courses that I teach is pre-calculus, and it's a college course that we offer credit through ECC, and they can earn SUNY credit if they choose to. But what I really wanted to focus on with this course was college readiness. The vast majority of the students that are in the course, whether they're seniors or accelerated juniors, go to a four-year college or university. So because of that, I really wanted to focus on that responsibility piece. So to help them transition toward college, a few years ago, I started this flipped classroom model, and one big piece of it is the access to course materials. What you're seeing on the side there is my Google page that I started, and I designed it to be kind of like a Blackboard, WebAdvisor, Dropbox, that kind of thing where the file storage is there that many college and university professors use. And so there's just some information there. We won't go through the whole thing, but the students, if they want to click on assignments, they have, if you can just scroll down a little bit. So this is our current unit, and what they'll see is the progression of the unit with the assignments that go with it. So it's really, it's on them. If they miss a class or they know that they struggled with something, they can kind of go back to luck, and then I also provide extra practice assignments and such for them right there. So it is all, they all have access to this, and really, no excuses. There's textbook solutions, if you'd like to click on the Unit 1 resources, just that's the first one. But for this one, some of the lessons are more appropriate for the flipped models than others, so you'll see these, these are the flipped lessons that I used for this particular unit and so on. So all of their information is right there in one place, just like they would have in a student management system at a more collegiate level. So really trying to get them to practice that responsibility piece. You can all have access to that if you'd like. One of the pieces that I really like with the flipped classroom is that the students, they do need to adjust to learning from videos. It is a transition, and it takes a little bit of time, but the purpose of that for the students that are college-bound is working on sitting through a lecture. What if they can't just stop the professor right away and ask their question? They need to practice, how do I take notes? How do I wait and ask questions later or two days from now? And also, many of the colleges and universities are going toward online classes and video learning. And then with that video piece too, what happens if you don't understand your professor? What if you do need to learn from a video? So adjusting to learning from videos, if they can do it in high school in our warm atmosphere, then maybe when they transition to college, it'll be a little bit of an easier transition for them. Also, managing responsibilities. So as Kathy was talking about with absences, especially our second semester seniors, when they go to their college visits, auditions, class trips, sectionals, sports, you name it, they're usually absent for it, but anyway, they are responsible for their learning now. You saw the list of assignments and topics. They know what they're missing. They know that they need to work ahead. I have students right now that are on our Italian exchange trip and a few other trips here and there, world travelers, and they knew what they needed to do, and I've had a couple of them, hey, I have a question about this. Yes, we're being responsible on your trip. With the pacing too, they can learn at their own pace. Some of them choose to learn ahead. Some of them choose to go back and re-watch different lesson videos, as we were talking about, and it's just, it's nice for them to be able to adjust their learning to meet their own needs, especially as seniors. They have a pretty good idea of what works for them, and many of them have really risen to the occasion. Lastly, the biggest piece that I love about the flipped classroom is the students are really getting used to working with others, but also selfishly, they're talking to an adult. I can check in with every student every day, and I just love that. But also giving the students an opportunity to ask for help. Next year, when they go off to college, or in two years when they go off to college, they're going to have to be able to attend their professor's office hours. They're going to be able to have these recitation classes where they'll have a grad assistant or a teaching assistant, and they need to be able to ask questions. So what the flipped classroom has allowed me to do with this pre-calculus course is really give the students an experience of a collegiate atmosphere, of what many of them, the majority of them, will experience in the next coming years.
All right, so we've seen the flipped classroom now from a freshman perspective all the way up to a senior perspective, so kind of some different ideas there, but there are some misconceptions that are out there about the flipped classroom, so we just kind of wanted to get those out in the open. So the first one is that, well, the flipped classroom is just replacing the teacher. All right, well, that's not really what's going on. So the videos are just a tool for the students to use. What's happening is the teacher is becoming a facilitator of the knowledge because they are doing the videos, but it's also about the experience that they're getting in class, and that is what the teacher is being able to provide. The second misconception is that it's just an online course, which yes, like Stephanie said, she's trying to get that atmosphere, however, it's more than just that the videos, it's more than just the online. It's about gaining the experience of learning how to teach yourself through a video, but it's also about that, the whole perspective of it. It's about the videos, asking questions, advocating for themselves, and doing those engaging questions, or engaging activities in class that really make this a holistic system that really works to help set up students for success. The third one is accessibility issues, and Nann, you touched on it, that we have, most of our students do have access at home, however, there are those couple of students that don't have access. However, the high school is set up with so many resources to help students that those students that don't have accessibility at home, we work one-on-one on, and we teach them how to problem-solve and time-manage because what we're going to do is we're going to help them come up with a plan and a system that's going to work for them, so that way they can use the resources at school and keep up to date with all of their materials. So maybe they'll have to watch the videos at school and maybe do something else that they would have traditionally done at school after school, but it's about problem-solving and time-management skills, which are definitely big life skills that our students do need to learn, so this is a great chance for them to learn those. And the last one is that learning in this format does not feel normal. Well, yes, that is true. For the students, they're not going to feel normal, but that is because this is the first time the student is now the center of instruction. Okay, the teacher, I am no longer in front of the class, I'm no longer the center, I'm no longer up there just lecturing. The student is now the one in charge. They are the ones that are going home and they are hitting play on the video. They're the ones that are coming to class and participating in the engaging activities. They're the ones that are talking to each other and asking questions, and the teacher is now just facilitating and making sure that everything is working around them in a way that really helps them understand and be successful.
So we all have asked our students as we've been through this process, what do you think? What do you like? What don't you like? And I try to, me personally, I try to survey my students once per unit, just to kind of get an idea of where their heads are at, what they're thinking, and the overwhelming majority of them have really blossomed into independent learners because of this. There's an incentive to get work done in class. They can work at their own pace. They can slow down and re-watch, go back, and by the way, all of these are what students said. We just kind of grabbed them from our surveys. These are pretty much word-for-word what they said. The students, they're excited about learning, they're excited about talking to their classmates, asking questions. It gives them a little bit of a break of the traditional lecture that they're used to sitting at, especially, I mean, as math teachers, we know. But also, that piece, it helps with being absent, and especially coming from my end with the senior absences, they're responsible for their own learning.
Stephanie, does this connect at all to the Master Teacher Program?
It does not.
Could you brag a little bit about that?
Sure, sure. I can do that. Last year, I was accepted into the New York State Master Teacher Program. I think this was a piece that was part of why I was accepted into the program. I do meet with a technology group when we talk about issues with the flipped classroom and other technology issues. I've been to many conferences on the flipped classroom and just different technology opportunities through the Master Teacher Program, but I can't say enough great things about the Master Teacher Program because it's nerds like me that get together and get to talk teaching. It's just, it's fantastic, and I keep bugging my colleagues, I got a couple in there too, because it really is, it's just an incredible professional development program that I just feel so fortunate that I am a part of. So the flipped classroom, this, I think this helped me get in there. My motivation to flip, because as Nann talked about, it takes an incredible amount of time and effort to put together this coherently and take the time to organize everything, and it's a lot, but, so, not quite, but I think it helps.
So just to wrap up, our final reward that we all agreed on was the students are taking ownership of their learning, that they are learning to advocate for themselves, which I think is such a huge life lesson, and you know, they're really learning that partnership and that ability to work with each other and to ask questions and to develop thoughts and work them out in a logical way. So I think that that was one thing that we all, we chose this as our final comment, was that they are truly and finally taking ownership of their learning.
Thank you very much. It really has been inspiring to watch these three wonderful teachers really build what is a very robust flipped model, and it's personally rewarding to really see the teachers take leadership for the technology and really growing in what is an effort that really expands the classroom. There's great learning happening in the classroom, but it really gives them some excellent resources outside the classroom. You know, shifting gears, also under learning and achievement, we really wanted to have some other goals in mind for this year. One of our goals this year was to also create a cross-curricular team. In a high school level, we're very much departmental in many ways, so we wanted to increase our collaboration amongst teachers on grade levels, as opposed to just within their own department. We worked with the strategic leadership team in our building to create a model in a meeting agenda that would be productive, and I think one of the, you know, most exciting things about this is that teachers are getting together that share classes in case loads, in terms of they share students, and they can talk about those students and their concerns and helping those students, as well as start to have those conversations more frequently about doing things cross-curricular, cross-curricular. So that's been, you know, a nice feature of our strategic plan this year, and it's been very successful. The other aspect that we really wanted to take a look at is having a departmental self-assessment. I think our goal overall is to really always look at our programs, our curriculum and instruction, and see where it is that we have opportunities that we can enhance, and we wanted to take the first step by having that ability to happen within the department and really have teachers look at their program in a self-assessment tool. So I'll hand it over to Mr. Wilds, who'll tell you a little bit about the self-assessment program we put together.
So our goal in designing the departmental self-assessment tool was to create a resource that we could use time after time to sit down with each department and to create an analysis of how things are, what are some prospective opportunities, what are consistent roadblocks that we face, what are some of the strengths as far as physical resources, what are some of the weaknesses, what are some of the things that stand in the way of reaching the goals that we want. So through our leadership committee, we actually hold a large group of teachers to kind of get the general understanding, what are some of the things that we want to discuss? What are some of the things that we want on the table? And then we actually also used a model from New York City, New York City schools to create this framework that allowed us to sit down with each department and to really cast a wide net, gather a lot of information that we can refer back to as we go on and accomplish each of these initiatives on our action plan. You'll see here Dave Mansell, our science chair, one of his takeaways from completing this over the last few weeks was the opportunity to sit down with his department, which each of them has their own subject and content area, so they don't have a lot of similarities when they face certain problems, but to sit down and actually work as a department to revisit those goals, to set new goals, and to say, what are the potential opportunities that we have and what's going to stand in the way? How can we create a plan to work around or through those things? It gave them a very rewarding conversation, and then as administrators and as the committee that's going to be working on these things, we have the voice of the teachers to refer back to on a consistent basis. So it's an evolving program. It really was a heavy lift. It took a lot of stakeholders, but the information that we're getting back so far has been very helpful and will continue to be as we go. to be as we go. This is just a smattering of all of our department chairs, but essentially, the resounding message was, we really appreciate the opportunity to sit down with our department and to talk about what we do, to talk about the great things that we do, to talk about some of those roadblocks, and then to look forward to the future as far as what can we do, what's still out there, what opportunities lay in front of us. So, it was a really great opportunity to engage in, and it gives us a model to refer back to. That was, the key was creating a good tool that we could refer back to consistently as years go on. Switching to priority two in the action plan, we're gonna talk a little bit about student life and creating a positive culture within our building. One of our goals was to expand and enhance our opening annual day meeting, or, excuse me, annual opening day meetings that we have with each class, to talk more proactively about anti-bullying measures, to talk more about what it means to be a tiger, to talk about our code of conduct, to really enrich the students in that opportunity of, this is what Amherst represents, and we did that very successfully. We also had the opportunity earlier in the year to partner up with the Tyler Clemente Foundation, with Siena College, and with AT&amp;T to be the Western New York Representation School for this Upstanders Program that they have. They chose a few high schools across the state to bring their program. They were trained Siena College students that actually came to our high school, they worked with our students, we pre-selected a wide, diverse range of our students to work and become upstanders, and essentially what they're doing is, instead of being a bystander, being an upstander, particularly with cyberbullying. So, inside of our school walls, we have a great control, we see what's going on, the hardest challenge is that digital realm. There's so much that happens after the bell rings at the end of the day, that it really is important to put the onus of responsibility within the students, to empower them, to give them that control, and to give them a voice. So, that was the premise of this whole program, and the greatest part about this is we've had meetings since this training, and the students want to keep it going. They see this as a movement, they see this as something that was empowering, they're talking about having initiatives like monthly activities where they might have a No One Eats Alone Month, or Thank A Teacher Month, and they really are pushing this forward. One of the things that is in the works right now, it's still very early in the hopper, but they want to take it to the middle school. They want to act as the Siena College students were for them for a middle school student, so it really has grown legs, and it was a wonderful opportunity. Danielle Wolf, our social worker, headed up a lot of the organizational part of it, but truly rewarding. We're gonna show a brief video here that just kind of outlines how that day went.
Turn it again?
Yeah, please.
We can do things with our phone, we just can't do other things.
It was down the line.
There we go. Perfect. Greg had to put that one first.
Okay, thank you very much, and that was a great program, it was really, see that, rewarding to see that come to life with the students in a very real way. The last area was priority three in Amherst Pride. One of our goals this year was to really expand our use of existing platforms with emphasis on video technology. We really wanted to dive into the realm of video in a deeper way, and, you know, we really have brought that to life with students being involved in creating videos, as well as giving us an opportunity to really spotlight our teachers, our students, and a lot of different programs going on. You know, this is just a selection of a number of different videos that we have created, us many times, it's student-created, many times it's students creating pieces of the video and sharing them with teachers and/or myself and Mr. Wiles and Ms. Abels, to put together videos, because I think really the goal here is to have a wider audience for what we're doing at Amherst High School. And video content, I found over time, that it really hits on social media. When we put out videos, we get a lot of interest in that video content, so we wanted to share more about the great things happening at Amherst High School, so we've really expanded how we use video, and we, it really kind of goes into, and it really has very tangible results. This is just, you know, an example of the type of reach we get on Facebook. In this one month period between January and February, we had 20,000, 27,000 hits on our Facebook page, which is an enormous amount of material. This is an example of one of our videos that kind of went viral, Put Your Face, Best Face Forward Project for Black History Month, that particular video alone got 14,000 views. So, there's really a lot of people seeing Amherst in a very positive way through video content, and, you know, that particular video shows that the amount of hits you can get, the different types you can, hits you can get on social media, and I think that is definitely the wave of the future, not only using video in the classroom, but using video to promote our school, and really using social media in a very positive and proactive way. So, we're, you know, very rewarded and pleased that we can shine a spotlight on our students, our staff, and all the programs in the community through social media, and we keep, we keep seeing wonderful results with that, so we're very excited about that. Finally, you know, we want always to have all these efforts, really garner something very tangible, and, you know, for the past three years, we've been named a reward school in New York State, that is very gratifying recognition, especially because a reward school is being measured on all students, and one of it specifically measures how some of your most at-risk students are doing. So, Amherst Central High School is a gap-closing school, our students are doing very well in all different areas, and from all socioeconomic backgrounds, ethnicities, and our special needs students. So, it's a great recognition, we'd like to think, and I think we do believe, that the strategic plan is delivering lots of results in that realm, as well as all the historic efforts that our teachers, students, and the families put forth. So, it's always nice to get that little feather in your cap, so we're excited about that. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to take those, and remember, like us on Facebook and follow us on Twitter. Any questions?
I got a question for the fabulous teachers who came and talked about the flipped classroom. Could you talk a little bit more in-depth about the accessibility? You know, if we have students who don't have access to internet, and even those who may, at the internet at home, may not have devices with which to access videos and things like that, can you give some more examples of how you really help those students?
I personally ran into that this year, this is the first year that I've really taken in arm with this, and I have to thank Mr. Pennella, actually, for hooking me up with a Chromebook card for this year, so I have one in my room. I tell my students at any time during homeroom through after-school, whether it's lunch-free period or what have you, you want to come and sit, even if I'm teaching, you can sit in the back, grab a Chromebook, watch, and they have taken advantage of that. I also have students that have been able to use it in their academic support periods, they go and use the computers there, the library after school, and also during the day, and actually Student Services has stepped up and opened the door on days I can't stay after, or the library's not open late enough, they've actually allowed the students, and as long as, and I say this right out the gate, if you don't have access, you need to see me, and I will make sure this works. And within one of those realms, we found a way to make it work. I don't have as many kids as you think, I also don't flip with all of my classes, I pick and choose, because I know that certain classes probably would end up with having a higher population of students not having that access, but regardless, between all of those sources and just having my own card in my room, I've been able to really allow the kids that opportunity to use it when they need to, and we haven't run into any issues once that first week was taken care of at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, I agree, same thing. I also applied for alumni this year and was, I was granted three Chromebooks that I have permanently in my room, so students do know that they can come in at any time. I have a little table set up right by the door, so they can kind of sneak in, sit, watch their videos. I have a lot of, of my students have friends, and they will actually watch it right on their cell phones. The Google Classroom is great, because it is compatible with so many devices, that they can usually always find a device that they can use within the school, within my classroom, or within friends, allowing them to use their devices as well.
One of the lessons that the flipped classroom has allowed me to impart on my students is that responsibility piece, and so for the students who don't have access, or their phones are taken away, or something like that, they, they really do rise up to the occasion and figure out a way. One of the, some of the feedback that I received, especially when I first started doing this with my seniors as well, so-and-so just copied my notes, and I don't do a lot of, I checked their notes, especially in the beginning of the year, we really focus on how to take notes, how to watch the videos, and so one of the complaints was, well, you know, so-and-so would always copy my notes, but we kind of, that was a learning experience, because we were able to talk about, okay, well, what are you getting out of this from copying the notes, but then, what are you missing by missing the lecture piece? And they started to notice that with their grades and such, that they would, they would do better if they actually listened to what was going on in the videos, go figure, right? So, it was a lesson that they were able to learn in high school, so, and I kind of translated that to their colleges. You have to go to class. You may not have attendance counted, but you have to go to class. And so, I think it was a really good learning experience that in working with combating those accessibility issues, or just senioritis, you know, that they were able to really learn that responsibility piece, and I think that's, that's one of the most incredible things that we've all seen, is the students really are becoming more responsible for their own learning.
There's, as our teachers become more proficient with technology, and our devices continue to grow, and our platform, you know, continues to expand, we have a lot of conversation about what the next step is, and I think somebody alluded to the survey and whether or not we might be in a place where we're headed towards one-to-one with the devices going home. One of the exciting opportunities that has surfaced recently, and I can't remember the exact provider, whether it's Verizon or Spectrum or whomever, but there's a pilot going on currently at BOSI's, where for $10 a month, or $100 a year, you can provide students who don't have the means to have internet access at home with a hotspot, so for, you know, a modest appropriation of $10,000, we could provide, you know, 10 kids with internet access, and based on the survey results from the freshman class, I think it was 93%, you know, we would be able to provide that access, and of course, you know, as a BOSI's expenditure, that would then be aidable in the following year, so the math is, you know, 68 or 70% of that would then be returned to us the following year. So, I'm watching closely that pilot program to see how that's rolling out in the two districts that are participating, because that's something that I think will get us over the horizon and over the hump of actually allowing the devices to go home with the kids and take that barrier out of place. So, that's something we're keeping an eye on closely.
Although, we're aware of the digital divide, the survey kind of confirmed what we're already seeing in a lot of literature, that the digital divide is collapsing quickly, and we're finding that low-income homes, there's a high percentage of internet capability in those homes, so I think we're getting very close to being comfortable with making that move at some point, knowing that we're not leaving anybody behind.
How much time is it adding to the amount, like, how much time is it adding to what they're spending on each of your classes, or the, or the videos, do they tend to be the same length as a class, or?
Yeah, I actually, it's kind of funny, because I, when I surveyed my students, one of them commented on the survey that, that they would rather do workbook assignment than watch an eight-minute video. I'm thinking, well, the workbook assignment's probably 30 to 35 minutes long, and it just kind of like threw me that that, and then, of course, you get the flip side, where the one, you know, you get the other student saying the complete opposite, because there's never any consistency. But actually, I find that students are spending less time doing things at home, and the fact that their phones are always with them, their homework is now on the go. If they're on a bus, if they're waiting at a doctor's office, if they're at a sporting event, if they're whatever, they're able to do their homework now, versus having a worksheet or a workbook, or all of these other things that they have to bring with them. And as a parent of two high school children, I've also realized the best gift is that they actually can't copy, because they snap pictures of their workbook assignments, they snap pictures of their worksheets, and they send them to each other, but on EdPuzzle, I can see if you watched it, I can see how far you watched it, I can see how many times you've watched it, there's no copying and snapping and doing anything, there's accountability. You can't copy, because now you come to class and you have to do that work in front of me, that hands-on work, and at home, you've got to watch the video, or you don't, but I'm going to know it, and it's not sharing it and 10 people hand me the same assignment. So, I've actually seen a lot of really interesting benefits come about on my end from this whole experience.
And clearly, we need bigger data plans.
Yes, but the videos tend to be between 10 and 15 minutes, so the material is very streamlined in the video, because it's when they come to class and they practice, that we go to the higher-rigger questions, or we kind of go and practice more, so the videos are actually a little bit shorter, we do, you know, it might take them a little bit longer than 10 to 15 minutes, because they might rewind, or they miss something, so they have to go back, or, I know, I impose questions into my videos, so the program will actually stop, and then they actually have to put in their answer, and then it'll continue playing, so they might have to stop to kind of check for a little bit of understanding before it'll go on, but it shouldn't take them any longer than, you know, their homework is still probably about 20, 20 minutes?
Yeah, mine's probably less for the videos, longer for written work when I do send it home, so.
Well, when you look at what future prospective employers are looking for, you regularly see, no matter what field it is, literacy, communication, collaboration, problem solving, you know, and you're hitting all of those things within your content area, because in the classroom, you're able to get the kids interacting with one another, and discussing the content, interacting with it, hands-on, so I think the benefits are great, and it's also important to note that you highlighted that this isn't happening with every class, every day, all the time, you know, you're judicious in hitting the big topics, and, you know, there, as somebody mentioned, there's no replacement for the student-teacher interaction that occurs in our classrooms, this is just a tool that you're using to increase engagement, accountability, and active participation.
Are any of these videos available outside of the Amherst website?
I don't post mine outside, you have to be logged into my Google Classroom to have access to my videos, but Greg is in my Google Classroom, and I have other teachers, like I said, I have special ed teachers, and actually a couple parents that are helping their kids have asked for their own access, and as long as somebody that I know is willing to do, but I don't post mine on YouTube or anything like that particularly, I could, but I just choose not to.
I only ask, before I came here, I watched five videos with my high schooler on how to find an epicenter of an earthquake, and...
That's important for a lab practical.
So, I'm assuming you have a video like that?
I do. I have a whole lab practical review.
And I, I post all my videos are on YouTube, as well as through EDPuzzle and Google Classroom, so if the students, for some reason, oh, EDPuzzle wasn't working, they know they can go to YouTube, look it up.
Well, it's much as that, though, but sometimes when parents want to help, they have to relearn a subject, and so you have to go watch the video before, and so trying to get into sometimes the websites is, you know, is difficult, because you don't have all the numbers, and so going to one of these other places like YouTube, then you're prepared, because it's readily accessible, so.
Kind of more self-conscious about her little face in the corner.
But Google Classroom does have an invite parents module, so if you want to join your child's Google Classroom, you can, you just have to request it from the teacher.
And one thing that hasn't changed, as technology has evolved, is as a parent, you always have the ability to say, you really need to go in and see your teacher in the morning or after school for extra help on this, because it's not obvious that you understand it, so you always have the ability, and I know that they're always available. So you always have the ability, and I know that they're always available if you want to take yourself off the hook if you can't find the epicenter of an earthquake.
It's hard. That's a safety conscious. That's difficult.
Does anyone else have any other questions for our principals or teachers?
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
You can tell that you put a lot in.
Thanks for being here and sharing your expertise.
It really does.
Great job.
Thank you.
I don't, I can't think of a good way to transition, so I guess I'm just going to say it. Our next topic is our budget update. So Mrs. Wazinski is here to provide us with our third budget update. And as you would imagine, and as you've all experienced, the budget comes more and more into focus as we get towards the state finalizing their budget. So we have some movement from our last presentation, and we'll continue to refine it as we move forward.
Thank you. Tonight's presentation should be a little bit shorter than last time because we have fewer topics to discuss. We'll only be talking about the items that have changed since our February presentation. So under revenue assumptions, we only have one item that we've changed, and that's our interest earnings. As we had mentioned last time, we were meeting with our banks and we did see an increase in our rates. We have since received a secondary increase in our rates again. So we've increased our projected revenue for our interest from about $18,000 next year to up to $100,000. Again, we think that that is still a conservative number. We will be doing some other investing, but we felt that this was something that we would be able to obtain, but not overshoot so that we would result in a budget shortfall next year, revenue shortfall. That leaves us with $102,000 in interest penalties and earnings, because there's a little bit in addition to that for penalties. And still leaves our revenue increase relatively flat for next year with a 0.3% increase in overall revenues.
So on the revenue side, we're still waiting for the final numbers from in-state aid from the enacted budget, which we hope will be on time by April 1st. The other piece we're closely monitoring is we have some money in our current year's budget set aside for technology, obsolescence, you know, turnover, replacement. And we're holding on those expenditures while we're monitoring our healthcare plan being self-funded. We want to make sure that we don't end up expending the money on technology only to realize a overage in our healthcare. So at this point, we are hoping next time, or at least by April, to increase our state aid relative to an increased allocation from the enacted budget, as well as increased BOSI's aid projection if we're able to expend the money in our budget and receive aid on it for technology. So those are a couple of things to keep an eye on. Mrs. Wazinski, I'm not sure if there's any other areas where we would expect movement other than, you know, transfers from reserves or appropriated fund balance.
Those are the four. Foundation aid increases, BOSI's aid increase based on current year expenditures, transfers from our reserves. Last year, we did have some funds appropriated, $100,000. We do not have that included yet. That'll be something that'll be an end discussion if we still have a gap that we need to close. So these projections, aside from those four areas, are where we think we'll probably On the expenditure side, we have a few more adjustments. The final rate for ERS came in at 14.9, which is down from 15.3 this year. Our prior projections were using a rate of 15.1. We had received information that it would be going down, but we didn't know how much. So again, we were conservative. So we did lower our expenditure about another $10,000 from our February projections. The reason it's remaining flat in expenditures even though the rate is decreasing is because we're seeing an increase in our salary costs, as we would expect due to contractual increases. So the difference between our increase in expenses and the decrease in the rate offset each other so that our expenditure will be relatively flat. TRS, we did know the rate last time, but there's an additional reduction in what we had budgeted for TRS based on some retirement savings and some reductions that we'll be talking about shortly in our salary codes.
Mrs. Wazinski, can I just ask you a quick question on TRS? Can you remind me, you know, you see the rate kind of going up? And you wonder, like, how is that? I, I forget how the system works. You know, the stock market's done, you know, you know, very well, yet we're seeing an increase, you know, what's going on with the pension system, I guess, that, you know, we're?
The pension system is close, if not fully funded. So we were surprised to see the rates going up. We did expect them to stay flat, if anything, not necessarily a decrease, but we didn't anticipate seeing the, the increase because the market is doing well, rates are increasing, the economy is improving, and the retirement system is, I believe, 98, 99% fully funded. In the past, there were issues where they weren't fully funded, but they've kind of alleviated that. I don't have a good explanation as to why that rate increased.
Yeah, and we don't necessarily have a say in it. You know, it's driven by the system and we get the number, but it's based on a five-year snapshot of the market and the earnings. And the report that I read when they published the rate was they believed it had peaked and they were racing for a decline in the market in the upcoming year. So that was the best explanation I saw on why it went down.
Nobody's dubious around here about that at all.
Well, they're also allocated. In a way, they didn't take advantage of all the opportunities. Because when you said the market was up, there were only 37% of US equities. Much smaller international. They have a big hole in the private equity, which who knows what the numbers are there. And I think that the actual return, because they run on June, June, July, I can't remember whatever it is, wasn't, was actually single digits. I think it was low single digits for the last. So I think that's, it's kind of more a question of where they were and where they weren't invested. So, but, I mean, they've been invested once, and I, I think that had a little bit to do as well.
Makes sense. In this update, we did not report any changes in generals for destruction or BOSI's for projections, transportation or debt service. So our expenditure savings, we did have four retirements. We now have six teacher retirements, which is a breakage savings of about $325,000. And we had some special education changes, changes in student placement and programming, which resulted in a reduction in our projected expenditures of just under $90,000, $88,000. So on our staff reductions page, it does look like there are many staff reductions, but the most critical thing to remember is that these reductions are all based on changes in student enrollment, changes in programming needs, and attrition-based reductions. So if a teacher retired and class sizes were low enough that we didn't need to replace them, they weren't replaced. And there has been a concerted effort in the district for the last several years, and certainly under Mr. Pinella's tenure, to make sure that anytime there was a vacancy or a retirement, that we look at it carefully to really make sure that if the position is needed, it's filled, but that if it's not, we're being fiscally responsible to our taxpayers, as well as being responsible to our students programmatically, to make sure that our programs stay intact and healthy, but that we have staffing levels that are In addition to our staff reduction, we had two program changes. Our strength and conditioning program was filled with a part-time strength and conditioning coach. That position is vacant, so we will not be filling that position. And instead, we will continue our program utilizing our athletic coaches and a new technology program that Dr. Ilg has recommended. And we do have a reduction in the intermurals that we're offering at the high school. We will still have intermurals at the high school, but instead of nine separate sessions, we'll have six separate sessions. So we're still serving the needs of our students in that building. And then materials and supplies, we've reduced our budgets for materials and supplies in six different areas. $5,000 from each of the four buildings, and also $5,000 from athletics and buildings and grounds, totaling $30,000 in reductions.
It's never easy to talk about reductions. And at some point, I hope we'll have a fully funded, predictable foundation aid formula. So from year to year, we will be able to plan accordingly. But when you look at this slide, you know, on the personnel side, to have a percent change of only 1.28%, you know, given all the contracts that we have in the district, and a total increase in spending from year to year of, at this point, 2.14% is really a testament to Mrs. Wazinski's leadership and our administrative cabinet, all putting their heads together to look at their program specifically, but also the district as a whole, to make sure that we're coming forward with as close in this meeting as we can to a balanced budget. We still have some work to do, but we're moving in the right direction. But I give a lot of credit to the way Mrs. Wazinski has approached this, and all of our administrators, and really looking at their role as 50% advocate for their area of supervision and 50%, you know, district level administrator. That's been a great mentality that we've had as a cabinet.
So to summarize, our overall budget has a $1 million gap. And we'll talk shortly, and Mr. Pinella's already mentioned some of the gap closers that we still have to look at over the next couple of presentations, but leaves us with an overall expenditure budget of $58.5 million for next year. This is a revenue increase of 0.3%. Our expenditure increase is just over 2%. And some of the areas that we still have to look at are increases in state aid, either from foundation aid from the legislative budget, or an increase in BOSI's aid based on current year expenditures, any additional staff reductions or retirements that may still come up, come about. We still have to look at any appropriation from reserves that we are interested in applying to next year's budget, and an increase in fund balance allocation to help close any gaps that may still remain.
So our next presentation in later this month, March 20th, will give you the opportunity to take a look at our current year fund balance projections, where we're trending in terms of revenue compared to budgeted and actual, as well as expenditures compared from budget to actual, to see what your comfort level might be in using fund balance to close the gap. You know, we've been keeping, you know, a document that we share, and we're hopefully looking at shortening that gap by about a little bit less than halfway by the time we ask the board to appropriate. So we're hoping to land somewhere in the region of $500,000, $600,000, which we hope is in your comfort zone to appropriate from fund balance and reserves to close. And based on that, would be the increase in BOSI's aid, an estimated increase in state aid, because the governor's budget was less than half of what was called for by many reputable state organizations, statewide organizations. You may or may not have seen recently the consensus report from the legislators and the governor was that what was in the original state budget estimates was, in terms of revenue, was quite low compared to what they're seeing in actual tax receipts collected. So we're optimistic that we'll see, you know, an increase in our state aid. We'll be able to expend the technology money to increase our state aid for BOSI's. And that will then look to you, hopefully in April, to gauge your tolerance on fund balance and reserves usage. And as we did last year, we'll give you our best projection next, next meeting, where we trend. And then we'll also go back and revisit the long-term reserve plan that we presented in the fall, so we can remind ourselves of the level of funding we have and what is recommended and where we stand before we look to use any of those reserve funds.
Would we, as part of that presentation, would we be able to gauge, if we start using reserve funds, you know, one of the things we've heard before is how having these reserves helps us with our borrowings. And since we're in the middle, you know, or the beginning of a capital project, quite a large one, and we're doing all these bond anticipation notes year after year and stuff, is how does that going to affect our borrowing costs, which ultimately our debt service? And I can see if we're going to reduce our reserves, is it going to increase our debt service costs, you know, ultimately in a year or something? I don't know if you're able to gauge that from what we've heard from Moody's or?
Well, we did have an in-depth Moody's review when we went out to bond, the $18 million bond. Our rating came in very favorable, and it was at that time that they asked us what our projected fund balance was going to be. And at that time, we were between $7 and $8 million. They were very happy with that. So our rating, our usage of reserves would only affect our borrowing and our interest rates if our rating were to change. So the levels that we're recommending to use aren't in a place that would diminish them so much that it would negatively affect our rates. And our reserve, our long-range reserve plan calls for not only the usage, but for the replenishment at the end of the year with any excess fund balance, which then is what the controllers are looking for, usage of the reserve and then replenishment of it. But also the replenishment of it keeps our total fund balance high, which helps maintain that excellent credit rating.
Yeah, our goal is, that's a great question. Our goal, especially with $25 million on the horizon by 2021 for the capital project, our goal is always not to use what we appropriate. And we were quite successful in that historically, with the exception of a couple of years, right, right before I took over this role, we had the $1.6 million that we used, and then in that same year, the transfer of the $1.3 to start the capital project. So that was our goal last year, to replenish that. You know, we, when Mrs. Wazinski and I look at the, the budget line by line, you know, she's identified, you know, approximately $400,000 in what I will call cushion in the budget codes, but they're in the areas that our auditors identified that we needed it, like special ed. As you know, in a special education budget, you can have six-figure swings with one or two placements. So we're looking to have, I think, $150,000 of cushion in the special ed line. And I remember meeting with the auditors last summer, and they said, it's highly unusual that you don't have this. We see this in all our districts. And then, of course, in benefits is another area, if you want to have a little bit of cushion. And we're trying to find that area, knowing that we have the $500,000 in contingency that we identified, that we don't intend to use. We feel like we have, you know, $400,000 to $500,000 in contingency within the appropriation. And it's always that question of, do you reduce it from your expenditure estimates to close your budget? Or do you keep it there for, you know, what is unforeseen at this point? And at this point, we feel like we found that happy medium where it's not padded excessively, but we feel as though our administrators have some flexibility and we have some flexibility for the unforeseen. Because I could go on for a long time to tell you about the unforeseen that we see, and, but, you know, you're, you're aware of the flooding issue we had at the gym floor, where you're aware of, you know, placements moving in and out, enrollment goes up, we need a half a teacher here. So I feel more comfortable having some of that flexibility. And so I, in full transparency, you know, want to make sure the public's aware, when you look at $900,000 out of a $58 million budget, I think it's 1% or, or less that we're, we have in cushion. Not necessarily... Not necessarily my comfort zone, I'd like to be at 3%. That would, you know, I'd like the budget to spend 97% of our budget. But the, to your point, I feel comfortable that we have some practices in place in terms of monitoring the budget during the year to put on a spending freeze, where if we see that spending is, you know, exceeding our comfort level, we always have the ability to freeze so that we can make sure we don't use what we appropriate. So I think that's a longer answer than what you were looking for. But our goal is really to not use the reserves and fund balance that we appropriate, but it's always there if we need it, is the best way to explain it. And again, to your credit as a board, you know, you, we're not budgeting a lot of cushion in our budget. And that's, sometimes for me, that's a challenging thought, because, you know, we're budgeting in March of 2018, trying to predict what's going to happen in March of 2019. And while our crystal balls are pretty good, they're not perfect.
I appreciate the color. It wasn't too long.
Okay, good. Thank you. So is there, are there any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Okay. The last item we have, a report from Mr. Bellisle. And, you know, given what's happened in the national landscape, we always are saddened when things happen like what occurred in Florida a couple of weeks ago. But it also gives us an opportunity for reassessment, evaluation. And certainly, we've been doing that and will continue to do that. And I thought it was timely to ask Mr. Bellisle to provide you with an update on our safety and emergency response planning.
So a little bit more of a somber note, I guess, you know, to end here, but there's certainly, there's much going on in the press, right, as Mr. Pannell pointed out. So this opportunity is timely in terms of giving an update to you and the community on what we're doing as a district, what we're doing at our committee levels, both at the district and at the building level. But it's also that continued renewal of our constant thinking of our current plan and bettering what our practices are. And that happens constantly. It's not always shared with you, of course, nor is everything, but at the same time, this is an opportunity to do that. This is a quote, actually, I've used before with my, with my boys, to be quite honest, at home. And it's, and you can read the quote, but it's essentially, what I use this as sort of a set when I think about our safety plan, in that you can, you perform best in moments of challenge and controversy and problems and emergencies for this, for this conversation, when you're planned and prepared and practiced, right? So we have a pretty thorough plan, we're constantly reviewing it, constantly bettering it. And so this sets the stage of how we approach emergency plan and safety planning. Just a quick update, I know you've seen some of this in the past, but New York State came through back in 2016, it was right before I took this position, to take a look at updating statutory amendments on how school districts perform in terms of their emergency response planning and district safety planning. I'm going to go through the difference again, it's just a second between those two things. But essentially, New York State worked with a number of other agencies, including FEMA, and they're not listed up there, and gave some guidance to school districts on how to perform, you know, their safety plan, as well as engage in emergency response planning, which was a new acronym, ERP, driven by FEMA, and as well as their command structure, which I'll also go over in a second, another acronym. Some of the amendments that were included at the time include some of those policies and practices around contacting parents in the event of a security issue or an emergency for that matter, even if a student's just injured. You know, students, what we call shelter in place, so we can make sure that students taken care of and kids aren't running out to the hallway. It covers a number of areas of emergency. It also required some annual trainings for staff, designation of a chief emergency officer, who happens to be me, updates in terms of plans. And those next two bullets talk about those in terms of policies, procedures, and creation of a consistent language with the language at Amherst. We have experience with, right, in terms of instructional delivery. So we're sort of used to that and we used to thrive in that environment. We're all talking the same talk, we're all moving the same way, we're all performing in an emergency situation, what more important circumstance could there be in order to demonstrate a consistent approach? The last two, and I know we're all familiar with these, were the addition of the drills for being locked down as opposed to all being fire drills, which we were all used to in the past. And then some, and then training with regards to mental health. And I'm going to come back to that shortly, as I get to the end. Just a quick review of the difference between a safety plan and emergency response plan. The safety plan is what you see on the website, and that's for the public. And I've gotten some questions recently, some to Mr. Pannell and some directly to me. You know, what is our plan and what does this mean exactly? Obviously, right now, it's, there's some heightened awareness. This was put out for the, for public comment and is put out for public comment every fall. And it's sort of a general outline of what our emergency plan is about and our general approaches and procedures as they relate to the law. The emergency response plan is much more specific to the buildings. There's, again, very consistent approaching and approaches in language. In fact, all of them cover the same sort of command structure, it's called ICS, incident command structure. And then again, that was driven by FEMA. And there are 21 current hazards and threats that they outline exactly how you approach that and you sort of, you sort of create that as per your district. So what the community looks like, what roads are nearby, and you have to outline that all ahead of time. So if the time were to come where you needed to get out of the building, for example, and we know years back, we had a truck flip over and chemicals spilled, how do we approach that? And there's a consistent process to sort of follow right within that document. So an administrator can open it and look at it, so there's no mistake and everyone approaches it consistently. The mental health component has been added, and again, as I know, we're going to come back to that. But essentially, the idea is to be proactive, and not only in terms of the way you act, but the way in which you plan. One of the things we added this year is a picture to the right, you can't see it, and I'll be happy to share a link with, with all of you. But this was a work safety placemat, if you will, for all of our office staff to quickly reference. If something were to happen right at the front door, someone were to the front door, come to the front door and they don't know exactly what to do, they can reference it there. They've been trained on using this, this safety mat, but at the same time, it's there for reference if need be. So it's laminated under their phone and they keep it. On the back is some additional information for them relative to our emergency response plan. One of the important pieces here, though, is that ERP is confidential. Some folks have asked, oh, can I see that? And unfortunately, the answer is no, because we don't want to share out with the entire population exactly what we do in every circumstance, because that could be dangerous for the school, once we enact our plan, if and when, if and when ever needed. Just quickly, the, the safety team, as it's designated by law, requires a number of members, many of which include our fantastic staff, who are phenomenal in terms of knowledge and background, whether it's CPS staff or some of our teachers or administrators. But more importantly, I wanted to highlight our ongoing and growing relationship with the Amherst police, as well as the two fire departments within our district, and Emergency Services, which is located over in the Harlem Community Center, I'm pointing the right way here. Nonetheless, they've been absolutely phenomenal in not only supporting us within our buildings during our drills, but also coming to our district safety committees and now our building level safety committees. I know a couple of you are on our district safety committee. And they most recently came and helped us work through what was called, I'll go through in a second, I don't want to wreck my thunder here in a second. So just generally, incident command structure, another acronym, right? Essentially, that's, as I said before, a FEMA-guided sort of organizational structure, which gives roles and responsibilities to all involved within the building. Here are some roles that our staff are trained on in terms of what you would do if something were to arise, especially if you're not one of those individuals. But in terms of the incident command structure, you've got titles such as incident commander, you've got safety liaison, you've got communication, you've got, you've got all these different roles. And I think I shared this with you back in the fall, we have binders made for each building where the principals, if something were to arise, they hand those up to those individuals. So all of their roles and responsibilities are right within that binder, they can open it and take a look, and they know exactly what they'll need to do. If you're ever interested, this is a great link that I use in our training.
Flipping it over to go into it in case one of these individuals is present?
Yes. So there is an incident command structure, it's like page three of the document. And with our emergency response plan, we have the full document, and we actually created something called an executive summary, which is a shortened version that the principals have at the top of their binder. So when they open their materials, if they're ever needed, they, it's easier to flip to. But within the first couple pages, there's a, there's identified structure. So if the principal's out, there's identified, if it's not Mr. Pedjin, it could potentially go to Mr. Wiles or Mrs. Abel. And then under that, there's school communications place on, there's two or three backups, if you will.
But they're all cross-trained.
They're all cross-trained and they're all informed and they're all typically part of the safety committee within the buildings or emergency response committees. And they're either on that committee or they've been trained on what they're to do, so they're showed, you know, certain roles and responsibilities.
I think the whole benefit of the ICS model, if you go back one slide, is it's designed to be responsibility-specific, not individual-specific. So we have binders in district office in each of the buildings where, if need be, you can pass them out to anyone and it has their role, and when you flip it open, it has their responsibilities clearly delineated. So in the event that anyone was absent, it's easy for anyone to take on any of those roles. And that was one of the big shifts in emergency response structure that, quite frankly, Amherst was at the forefront of and working with Erie One BOCs and Dennis Quazala to go to the ICS model as opposed to the old model where it was individual-specific, now it's responsibility-specific.
Well, and also all first responders use the ICS model.
Right. It's a consistent structure across.
Correct. Good point.
And that was the point, I remember Dominic Kremer was here from Emergency Services at my presentation in the fall, and he was a huge help as well, to sort of referencing. All of them are following this model, they all speak that language, it helps when schools do that, so when they come in, if they need to support us, whether it's through training or through our drills, or in an emergency, if they came in to help. Their talk and the same talk we are, we're saying things they understand and can come in and support. I think Dominic's point's dead on in terms of what, what even Mr. Kremer shared with me when I took this position, said, yeah, it makes sense, right? Here's just a little bit of background coming into this upcoming year. And something to this end was also shared with staff recently, just in the last couple of weeks, as the principals shared out sort of what we're doing in our district, just a reminder of our emergency plans. We sort of shared with the staff what's being done up to now, again, just as a reminder, because if you're not always thinking about it, you're probably not remembering all of what's gone on. But up near the transition with the law, you had the creation of these districts as well as building-level emergency response teams. Now, in the past, we always had a different district save committee, right, a safety committee. But what this did is it really, again, as we just talked about, created a common language and structure, and then also folded out to buildings, as well as building an enhanced sort of relationship with the Amherst police, the two fire, for two fire departments, as well as emergency management, and as Tony just pointed out, with risk management, Eddie R. Boces and Dennis Quazala as well. We continue to review our plans, that's ongoing. So, for example, recently, at the, at the high school, we did a, right at the start of the year, we did, we had one of our lockdown drills. And it became clear that one or two rooms couldn't really hear the PA system very well, so we had to address the PA. And those, those drills are for, right? And the police were there to sort of point that out, as well as remind staff of how to respond if need be. Mr. Wiles was fantastic in creating a document, we were able to, a Google form, to share out with staff and get feedback. And that's been extremely helpful, that's what those plans are for, they're meant to be formative and grow what we do, as opposed to just practice them and walk, you know, walk through it. I think we all remember when we were kids, fire drills, we just, you hated them, right? Unless it was beautiful outside, you had to go outside, and that's really what we got out of it. Well, what we try and get out of it here is growth and development. We currently have video cameras in many of our buildings, of course, that's a great reference if need be, if you ever need to reference back to see if, see what occurred potentially in the hallway. Those are helpful in terms of student interactions as well, if there was a fight or what have you. The strategic plan, I want to point out, you saw, we heard the high school this year talk about priority too. We've heard the other building, whether it's pause or upstanders or what have you, there's an approach to be proactive and preventative on a tier-one sort of early sort of approach model, right, character education and reducing incidences as opposed to just looking at how we react and respond to incidences. We need to do both. But the buildings have done a really great job since the, since the strategic plan was born, just, just a year and a half ago, really, in enhancing that student life priority. And again, you heard one of those great examples tonight, you continue to hear them from the principals. Professional development is ongoing in terms of the Dignity for All Students Act, as well as trauma for our social workers in particular, they've been trained in some of the trauma response processes. And I'll talk a bit more in a second about opportunities, not just for our staff, but for our students. You're aware of our collaborations with Gateway, that we've been able to grow in the past couple of years, provide services for our families and students, as well as CPS and having someone within our, within our district to sort of reflect and respond to and use their expertise and also connect with families who need that help. This year in particular, and I noted, reflected, I talked about this a second ago, we did, we've done tabletop activities at our district committee level, and I know a couple of you were involved with that, and it was outstanding. So the Amherst Police Department and Emergency Services facilitated a role play essentially with our committee on how we respond to an emergency situation and how we utilize our emergency plans at a district level. And it was phenomenal in terms of doing an audit, if you will, of our processes and procedures and how we respond in our awareness of what's, what it's, what's entailed within our practices, as well as looking at possible gaps on things we could improve upon. What we're going to be doing in, in the spring, actually, is having these activities occur at the building level teams, where the building teams are actually going to have those same two individuals come out and complete those role plays with them, so they can do the same sort of audit within their building. And they, they'll come in with an exact scenario on, on what may play out, and they have to sort of respond as a team on how that, how they would, how they would react. And they would have to include all of their backups too, in terms of those folks we were talking about before. So everyone's aware of what's going on, not just those folks who are the first name listed. I talked about the work safety sheets that I'd shared out for office staff. The biggest piece here is really, are really those two bottom bullets here. And that's the security assessment completed by NYSER. And if you're familiar with NYSER, that's the New York State Insurance Reciproco. We utilize their services as an insurance, as part of our insurance plan. They are coming in, actually in April, their executive director, his name is Brett Caruthers, is coming in to complete that security assessment of, really, it looks at our buildings and grounds, of, are there any strengths, weaknesses in terms of our buildings and grounds? And that will carry over into our review of capital work currently and moving forward. And then also doing what's called a vulnerability or safety assessment, which looks more particularly at your policies and procedures around your safety plan. And that's being completed now, in fact, it's about half completed. Dennis Quazala is completing that in collaboration with myself, Mr. Rampado, and our building principals and our, and our safety team. So together, we're going to take the results of those two, share them out with our safety committee, district safety committee in the spring, which we talked about in the fall completing. They will both be completed between March and April, and then we'll share that out with our district safety committee in terms of moving forward, are there any recommendations for our district? And potentials, really, in terms of smarts, I know there's some smart schools money out there.
Yeah, and what's, it's important that this is done, you know, not just, this was planned prior to any, anything tragic occurring in Florida, because, you know, we're spending a significant amount of money in upgrading our high school, and we want to make sure that we're keeping safety at the forefront of our planning. We're also, you know, it's, we're dealing with a building that was, especially in the high school, was built in 1930 and was designed, as schools are, to be the hub of the community. So there's more than 15 entrances and access points to the building, because we want people to come in, and we want people to feel welcome. But, you know, and over the last 20 years, there's been a shift. So of course, safety is our first priority, and we are analyzing very closely our protocols and procedures, also keeping an eye on, on safety. And unfortunately, you know, we live in a world where, when we're putting in beautiful double-hung windows, we also have to be aware of whether or not that creates a vulnerability for our students, you know, who might be sitting in the cafeteria, you know, behind those windows. So we're making sure that while we're planning our capital project, we're hardening all of our entrances, we're maximizing technology, we're looking at shatterproof glass and films that can be added for those things, while also making sure our students feel and parents feel invited and welcomed into the building. So it's a, it's a delicate balance, but, you know, it's a priority and it has to be done. In addition to that, Mr. Bellisle mentioned, we have our smart schools allocation of about a million dollars. And, you know, in addition to technology, one of the approved expenditures is safety. And again, in light of recent events, we've been told that the state is expediting the review of plans that involve safety upgrades. So it gives us the opportunity to focus review of plans that involve safety upgrades, so it gives us the opportunity to focus on our other three buildings as well, in addition to the high school, where most of the capital work is centered around.
So the next couple of slides really are sort of just brief hits, because, again, as I noted earlier, just a lot of the questions coming in are about what are our practices, what are our procedures, what are you allowed to share, what does shelter in place mean again, what is lockout, why did you, why are you wearing lockout for the day at Smallwood, what was going on with that? So just a quick reiteration, we're required to do eight drills, I'm sorry, eight evacuation drills and four lockdown drills. And those are opportunities, as I said before, for growth. And as I said, the police come in and help us review those procedures as they're with us, and observing, and providing sort of that, you know, different lens on our practices and procedures. The terminology some of them have you using, yeah, these are on the back, that sheet down the bottom actually references each one of those vocabulary items, as well as how you're supposed to respond to folks who may need a quick refresher if something were to happen. They're on the back of every single door within the district. But as you've been, you know, shared with before, shelter in place essentially means that you're kind of in your classroom, you're continuing to teach instruction, but maybe something happens, we've had a student, maybe you hurt their leg, and they need to be taken down, and we don't want everyone running out the hallway, we want that student to be able to get down to the main office, or to the ambulance, or what have you, safely. Shelter in place would be an opportunity.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Evacuation, we're all familiar with an evacuation, similar to what a fire drill is, essentially, you're leaving the building and going to a point of containment, if you will, or a point of meeting. Lockout is when the building is just locked, so no one can come in or out. Typically, that's done, if there's something going on in the community, let's say someone's trying to rob a bank around the corner, well, they're gonna, they're gonna lock the doors because they don't want to take risk of anyone going out. Let's say the person robbing the bank is, you know, driving away at a high speed, you know, you just don't want to have anyone coming or leaving, coming or leaving the building, in particular, students who might choose to walk around, and that certainly would not put them in a safe scenario. Lockdown is the one everyone really talks about, where if there is an emergency or an intruder potentially, that's where those students are locked, you know, they're maintaining the room, doors are locked, and students are kept in a safe place and monitored by our staff. But as I said before, this is one of the ones I'm getting a lot of questions about in terms of what are the differences, so I figured it's a good opportunity to rehash and reiterate with the community at large. So essentially, as Mr. Bellisle pointed out, work constantly continues, right? We're constantly trying to better what we do. One of the bullets that's not up there certainly are the two assessments that we'll be reviewing soon, but what I wanted to focus on here with this slide is that mental health component. So we provided some mental health training and awareness to folks at large, particularly our CPS staff, as a great resource to our staff as a whole. And in my fall presentation, the staff, that link at the bottom was shared. But what's up and coming soon, and many of you have probably heard this, is New York State's putting out a mental health curriculum that will be part of our health curriculum for all of our students. I'm currently looking into something before that, to potentially provide to both our staff and students, and it'd be very different in terms of objective. The students would be more of awareness of, you know, my friends, if my friend's, you know, struggling with something, they're having a bad week, what's the difference between that and being potentially depressed? Who should I tell, and how should I address that with my friend, and what should I be looking for versus having a bad day? The other for staff would be more of what's called Mental Health First Aid, and there is actually an international training that's out there, that we could potentially provide some of our staff to then potentially turn key to our staff, it's one of the models I'm currently looking at. But there's certainly more to come there, and as I said, the work continues, so that's everything. I have the link there for you, too, if you're interested in what New York State has out so far in terms of mental health. There's not a lot to go on just yet, it's really, they really just inform us that it's coming, and we haven't seen anything in particular that's tangible just yet.
And we've been told it's gonna be effective July 2018, and that there's a committee working on resources, so Dr. Ill is prepared to set aside some time over the summer for curriculum work with our health teachers, but we have not seen those resources from the state, but we're poised and ready, structure-wise, to address that work. Unfortunately, when tragedies occur, sometimes the dialogue after the fact is what we've heard recently, you know, there's, there was no surprise that the individual that carried out the tragedy in Florida, there was many warning signs. So that's where I really think the proactive piece stands, with the mental health training, you know, the telling somebody, if you see something, say somebody, you know, our community being vigilant about monitoring students' social media activity, and really making sure that if you see something that's suspicious or potentially dangerous, communicating so we can be as preventative as possible. And then, of course, there's several things there to be reactive if we need to, and then a keen eye on construction and improving the safety at our buildings. What we're doing immediately as well is looking at procedures and policies, too, you know, making sure we're vigilant about that single point of entrance after the school day begins, because sometimes, again, in good times, you become lax, or in sometimes, you're, you know, oh, I have a delivery coming from a fundraiser, so we're gonna prop this back door open so that the delivery truck can come in, and, you know, we're just re-analyzing all of those things and evaluating them through a different lens, given the nature of what's occurred nationwide recently.
So those incidents that we've had recently, like fire drills, that kind of thing, do this count against your totalizing?
Any fire, any fire drill does, if it's, if you're doing an actual lockout, for example. Lockout isn't one of the required, you have to have four lockdowns and then eight evacuations of fire drills.
No, I think what she's saying is the two unplanned ones that we had at the high school, can we count them towards the 12?
Well, and the situation at Smallwood, too, can that count against the total two, or no?
That was a lockout.
Yes.
The lockout won't count. The fire drills, I believe, count. But the lockout doesn't just because you need lock, you need four lockdowns, lockouts aren't required, shelter in place isn't required.
Some of them have.
The lockdown wouldn't count if it was an incident, though.
Some of them have to be timed also, but I can't remember off the top of my head how many of them need to be timed, and reported, but certainly, if we have the opportunity to have fewer disruptions, because we've had those, we would like to capitalize on that.
I've got a gladiator student, I've got a gladiator student at the high school during the one, maybe that could count for all the buildings.
And middle school students were there, too.
Middle school students.
This isn't one of those things we probably want to skip on, I would think.
Right. Well, I thought it was important to let folks know that safety is a priority. I think Mr. Bellisle has brought a new level of sophistication and renewed reinforcement of our planning in being in this role. It's certainly been one of his top priorities coming into this role, and he continues to be vigilant about it, so I thought it was important to communicate that to the board and to the community, so thank you.
All set?
All set.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're on to new business.
All right, we will need a motion for new business.
Motion for new business items F1, A through F, 2, A through E, 3, B, C, D, E, and H.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items F1, A through F, 2, A through E, 3, B, C, D, E, and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, 7-0. Ms. Custody, do we have any follow-up action items?
I do not.
Okay. And we will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session for matters regarding employment of a particular person.
A second?
A second.
All those in favor of convening to executive session?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming.